Happy that you're here today. It's nice to have an audience. We don't always get to have one, so we appreciate your being here. This too, I would like to welcome Dr. Kim Benton. This is Dr. Benton's first meeting with us as the interim superintendent. I made myself a note because when I spoke at Mass recently, I forgot to introduce her. So, but they all knew her anyway. And she did a session, so I think everybody was appropriately introduced. But we are thrilled to have Dr. Benton with us during this time. She's certainly no stranger to the department and has played a vital role in the success that we've had through the years and certainly now. So, we are pleased with that. I'm gonna call the meeting to order and call roll. Mr. Jacobs and Mr. Miller are online this morning, and if you would state your location when, excuse me, for us, please. Everyone else is in the boardroom with the exception of Dr. Elam, who is out of town. So, Mr. Miller, would you state your location, please?
Hattiesburg.
Okay, and Mr. Jacobs?
Quarantined in Brookhead.
Oh, me. You got bitten, huh?
Got bitten yesterday before I was leaving for South Carolina. Test is positive.
Well, we hope you feel okay.
I'm doing pretty good.
All right, good. The remainder of our board is present in the boardroom. We will begin our meeting with a pledge of allegiance led by Mr. East, and I will lead the invocation.
Do you want to make a pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where voices stand, one nation, united in God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all?
Join me in prayer, please. Our Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the abundant life that you've given each one of us. We just pray that we'll always be aware of where our blessings come from and the fact that with blessings comes responsibilities. We thank you for this opportunity to make decisions that impact the boys and girls and the teachers across our state, those who spend their days trying to mold and help young people be successful. May we always be aware of our responsibilities and may we always be aware of the many good things that happen every day in our schools, but we also pray for those where we can perhaps lend a hand or be helpful. We thank you for those around the world who are serving to keep us safe and to keep us a free nation, and we pray that we'll never take that for granted. Go with us as we go through this meeting. Help us to make good decisions. In thy name we pray, amen. All right, our first item for action is approval of minutes of the June 16th, 2022 board meeting and the minutes of a special call board meeting on June 15th and our student representative interviews on June 15th, a budget work session on June 23rd, 27th, and July 6th. Do we have a motion to approve all those minutes? Okay, is there a second? Okay. All in favor? Okay, any opposed? Thank you. That shows that there's been a lot of work going on lately. I also need to remind you to silence your cell phones if you're in the room and you have a cellphone out. Make sure you silence that. Next, we'll approve the agenda. Do you have any additions or deletions to the agenda? Okay, are there any items on the consent agenda that you would like to pull out for discussion? All right, well then, if not, we will, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as presented. Okay, Ms. Werner? Okay, Ms. Werner, Dr. McGeehee. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, thank you. All right, now we come to our recognition ceremony. Today, we'll be recognizing the Council of Economic Educational National Personal Finance Challenge finalist from Germantown High School. Ms. Cook?
Okay, good morning, Ms. Altman, Dr. Benton, and board members. Today, we are recognizing four students from Germantown High School in the Madison County School District who were invited to compete in the Council for Economic Education's National Personal Finance Challenge. Honoris, as I call your names, please come forward and join Ms. Altman and Dr. Benton at the front of the room. The first three students are 2022 graduates of Germantown High School. They are Cooper Ward, Shranithi Lakshmi Marianen, Isaac Tols, and we also have Prithika Lakshmi Marianen, who is a rising junior at Germantown. These four students make up Germantown's team that was one of only four high school teams in the country to compete in the National Personal Finance Challenge. They beat out 12,000 other students to compete. Supporting them today are their families, their teacher, Kristy Walker, and Selena Schwarzenegger, president of the Mississippi Council on Economic Education. The National Personal Finance Challenge allows high school students to demonstrate mastery of earning, spending, saving, investing, and managing credit and risk. For the past four years, these students have been studying and applying personal finance concepts with the hope of advancing as a top team in the nation. To advance, they had to win their state competition and compete two additional rounds, which included a test and a case study. By winning their state championship and rising to the top of the semifinals, they earned an all-expense-paid trip to New York City in June to compete in what's called the Final Four. While in New York, the students had two hours to create a financial plan for a fatuous family, present their plan to a panel of judges, and answer the judges' questions. Not only has this team established a foundation at Germantown High School for future leaders to follow, but they helped boost Mississippi's reputation as a national leader in financial literacy education. What's more, all three graduates are star students and national merit scholars. Cooper and Shranithi plan to continue their education at Mississippi State University, and Isaac is heading to college in Alabama, and Prithika will continue the team's legacy as a junior this coming year. All four students are truly leaders in their school and community. Students, we congratulate you today for this major accomplishment and for representing Mississippi so well in the National Personal Finance Challenge. You are welcome to share any remarks you care to at this time.
By the way, Dr. Quintero, what's going this far?
Yeah, I'd really just like to thank Kristy Walker. I mean, the Personal Finance Challenge is really difficult. A lot of terminology is up there. It's really difficult for a student to get to know the guy. She really worked it out. So, I really like her.
I'd like to thank Kristy Walker for making that whole journey through. I was a bit scared at first because we were all strangers, but I think it really did bring back a little bit of something about my name and that also to support the board this year. And also, why? Being Mississippians, sometimes we don't give the credit for how awesome we are, and I'm so proud of them. I'm gonna miss the three of you. I've gotten to know them as well over the past five years. But Prithika, I'm counting on, you know, to help us to continue. I'm gonna go back to New York this next year, so, but y'all, they did us proud, and thank you, young people, for... But y'all, they did us proud and thank you, young people, for bringing us here. Best wishes on blessed hands.
You all are welcome to stay. You're welcome to go, whatever you want to do, so. Our next item will be a report from the state superintendent. We'll let them clear the room before we start.
Good morning, and thank you, Ms. Altman, the University Board. This morning, I'd like to begin by welcoming and introducing one of our newest staff members. Holly Spivey, could you please stand up? Holly is MDE's new Director of Government Relations. She'll be filling the shoes that, shoes and roll that makes men feel prior to her joining us. Holly is the former Education Policy Advisor to Governor Kate Reed and has worked alongside us and many of you in this room for years. She's also worked very closely with Dr. Dan at our early learning effort, which we, Dr. Redd, has started. We are extremely pleased with how you've gone out to the public. Today, I would also like to recognize and express my deep appreciation to the entire MDE staff for your hard work and seamless way they have adapted to our disciplinary work sites. All staff are up and working at alternate sites, including the Mississippi School, the Jefferson Line, Raymont Facility, and the Wolf Building. And our employees have been amazing. They've been so incredibly positive and responsive to ensure that MDE remains open for business and that we didn't miss a beat. I want to especially thank Dr. Felicia Gavin and Kim Stans for coordinating our moves while managing the major repair work that's taking place at Central High School. Also, John Kramer and the entire OTFS team, some of them are here on the side. They've just done a tremendous job getting us up and running with our technology, our teams, our team's phone numbers. It was a heavy lift. I mean, if you look around, you can see head nods because it really was and they did that so beautifully. And of course, Jean Cook, thank you for handling all of the logistics that were necessary to set up operations in multiple locations. I also want to extend our gratitude to you, Julie Smith, and I extend that to the superintendent of Mississippi Schools at Jefferson Line, giving the gracious host and we are very grateful for you opening up your campus to us. Now, you may be curious about the progress of the renovations at Central High School and what I want you to know is that the interior and exterior work is on schedule. Nine, nine, and whether for next, page one should be complete all of the splits. And we, you know, we have to be mindful of not only the rain and that type of weather condition, but also the stream because of days when it gets too hot, we workers have to leave when the temperature gets in excess of a hundred degrees. We'll start to understand now. What has been completed so far, they have begun removing the existing roof. They're doing that in pages. So they've completed one through seven and what that means is it's one side of the building and they removed the entire staff, they threw in the skyline and it's all scaffolding and so forth. So we're not going in. We're staying safe and staying out and staying at alternate locations, but I did want you to know that work is on schedule at present. At your table, you also have found, and we will now move to our board members, that are not able to, we're not able to be here today, but you have documented it literally, cut off print. Like we printed it, we're through late last evening. You have a copy of the ITO's 2014 district for districts and schools. And this is something that, for Lori Weathersby, helped to take a lead on it and many other directors and staff members were involved. But what this is, is a customized guide for the Mississippi with evidence-based resources, strategies, a lot of Mississippi school districts and programs are actually featured in this document and it's ready to go out next week to all of our districts. But we are telling that they can use it, that they continue to double down on supports to accelerate learning for boys and girls across our state. So we're excited about that. Last week, Dr. Jan Smith and I had the opportunity to be interviewed by a post story about the progress of the Literacy-Based Promotion Act. That gives us an opportunity to highlight all the progress that our state has made in improving literacy outcomes and then we have the opportunity to reiterate our commitment to continuing to move this work forward. Improving literacy for all children in our state remains a top priority and a core part of our work. The MDE team has been busy, busy, this presenting a summer conference and professional development event across our state. We have been feeling the excitement and enthusiasm and energy as we interact with school teachers and leaders and support staff as they gear up to begin a new year. We made multiple presentations at the Mississippi Association of School Superintendents Mass Summer Conference. And by the way, Ms. Altman did a beautiful job keeping off their proud references and representatives all so beautifully. All sessions were well attended and received many, many positive comments about the response of MDE presenters and program launchers. I have the opportunity to speak during superintendent's launching, which was attended by seven legislators from the state and also on panel during that launching.
All right, we'll try this. I was thrilled to be joined at Mass by Dr. Barrett and Jackson County Academy's Teacher Academy student, Megan McDaniel. Megan reached out to me about six months ago when she was doing research for our school project on public education and policy. And Dr. Barrett graciously arranged for Megan to join us at Mass and shadow MDE leaders. Now, I'll bring this up because Megan wants to be a teacher and she was the star of the show. Superintendents, curriculum directors, everybody wanted to speak to Megan. It was just a beautiful thing. And while she was there, she also had the opportunity to meet representatives of the two universities that she's interested in attending. Having both Dr. Barrett and Megan present really put a face on our grow-your-own-and-teacher recruitment efforts throughout the state. Last week, I also had the opportunity to present at the Mega Conference, which was sponsored by the Alabama Department of Education. And when they found out I was from Mississippi, a young lady came up and spoke to me and she said, I graduated from Mississippi. I said, you did? She said, yes, do you know the School of the Arts? I said, I think I do. And she said, well, I have to tell you something about it. And so she told me her story and it was that the difference that MSA made in her life and because of her experience with Dr. Hirsch and the teachers there, she became a teacher. The only problem with that is she's in Alabama and we need to recruit her back. But you know, we don't realize sometimes the incredible influence that our educators had. We heard that a little bit today from the students and it was beautiful to hear that. But it certainly reminds us of the incredible influence as we plant these seeds for continuous learning and build out that pipeline. Included in your materials, you found something else in front of you today and it's a front and back sheet that spotlights the professional development that took place across our state during last school year. More than 11,000, let me say that one more time, more than 11,000 teachers, instructional coaches, specialists, administrators, had the opportunity to participate in high-quality PD and it was in all different forms, face-to-face, virtual sessions, and we even added a new element which allowed for teachers to engage in independent study through Canvas courses. In the upcoming year, 22, 23, the outstanding PD staff will bring, continue to bring trainings forward. And we are excited, we've released the Professional Growth Catalog and we've aligned it to the work that Dr. Van Cleve and Dr. Murphy do with our Professional Growth System. And when we shared that with administrators, they were extremely excited. So we're, we're, we know, are very confident that as we double down on our professional development, we'll continue to see a return on investment with outcomes for boys and girls. We're in the process of going across the state and scheduling our regional superintendent meetings. I want you to know that they will take place in August and September and we will be holding those in six, the six RISA areas. Superintendents were very eager and excited that we would be coming to all six areas this year, so we're counting on having really good conversations during that time. We will send out an email with registration details to superintendents next week and we will also send that with, to board members and you are always welcome and invited, if your schedule allows, to attend any or all of those meetings. As I close my remarks, we want to share with you just a two-minute slideshow that captures the work of this incredible MDE team, what they've done in June and July as they, as they have touched educators across our state in professional learning. So Tamela, if you will roll the slideshow, let's see.
So, as I mentioned, we attended, let's see what our first one is here, the Mississippi Association of School Superintendents, the Mass Conference. We also attended the Mississippi Association of Secondary School Principals and Elementary School Principals and made presentations there. They look like they're having a good time, right? The Making Connections Teacher Conference. And the Mississippi Transitions Back to the Future. And here you see a work group last week that convened to work on our Mississippi College and Career Ready Social Studies Standards. Principal Training. This particular training focused on our third through 12th grade mathematics instructional observation tool. And that was held here in Jackson at the Wolf Building. Mississippi Science Matters. Science teachers from across the state participated in this training. Professional Development, Development supporting our Mississippi Achievement School District. And then our work continues on multi-tiered supports and what that means is intervention supports to boys and girls that need that extra help. We worked alongside their teachers. And then finally, training around our own demand tutoring that you approved several months ago. It's up and running and we're getting really good feedback on that resource. And that, and that concludes, Ms. Altman, my remarks and thank you.
Okay, thank you. As you can see, there's a lot going on. I want to also welcome Holly Spivey. We're happy to have you as part of the team and look forward to working with you. And certainly Holly comes with very breadth and depth of connections and knowledge, so we're pleased to have her. I also want to thank the MDE staff. As Dr. Benton mentioned, this is their second major move. If you recall, sometime back, there was a flood in the building and they had to move out for quite some time and then this time with the construction there, they've also had to move. And that is no small task, to move that whole department along with all the resources and the technology that has to go with it. And so we thank you for your diligence. We thank you for your flexibility and what you've done. And certainly, we want to thank the Mississippi School Board Association for allowing us to use this room and making it easy and comfortable to make the transition for the time being. As has already been said, I did speak at Mass one morning and for the prayer breakfast and that is always fun and it's always interesting to visit with the superintendents and get different perspectives about, get their perspective about things that go on. And of course, they were all very interested in the superintendent search, but at the same time, they were very happy to have Dr. Benton, so they were very complimentary of that. The rest of my time since our last meeting has been spent coordinating with the consultant, Sonya Amos, Dr. Gavin, in setting up interviews and times and dates for our candidates. Our goal with the consultant is to have a list of candidates during the week of October 31st, through that week, first week in November, for interviews and we'll do that, that week. And then with these, some of these, there's still some things to be nailed down. But then the week of November 7th, we, after the board has reviewed the candidates, we will bring in the, how many ever, candidates to interview and then we will have a board meeting on November 10th. So that's the schedule, the end of October and the first of couple of three weeks of November are gonna be very busy in working this. And as I've said before, our goal would be to have someone in place by January 1st, but it also depends on the candidate and the schedule that they have or perhaps the job that they currently hold and whether or not they have flexibility in their work. So that's our goal and that's what we're working toward. And our consultant has been very cooperative and been very ambitious in getting, getting things rolling. So that's where we are with the superintendent search. Our student representatives, we do have Micah Hill with us today. She's had a very busy summer. I will tell you that our newest representative, Charlie Frugé, is not here today because he's attending a summer program at Vanderbilt, but he will be here next meeting. So I'm gonna let Micah tell us a little bit about her 2022 experiences, especially with Innovate Initiative and other things that she's been doing. As a reminder, and I just saw her, make sure when you speak, you hit your green button on your microphone so that you're connected. So, Micah, turn it over to you. Forwarding everybody beautifully. If you don't, for those of you in the audience, if you don't notice, we sometimes have to learn a new vocabulary. I think we all know what Instagram is, you may not know what, what blue checks are, but fangirling, you ever heard of that word? I caught it as she was, as she was saying that she was fangirling with that man, so thank you, Micah. We, we look forward, I think you and Charlie will make a really dynamic twosome, and very bright young people, and we're proud to have you. Subcommittees, I don't think there were any subcommittees, but you did get, subcommittee meetings, but you did get an updated roster recently that Sonya Amos had done, so I think we're good to go when we get back in the groove of that. Our next item is our board action. The first one is Spring 2022 Kindergarten Readiness Assessment, and you have information at your place.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Ms. Altman, Dr. Benton, and board members. I'm Tanette Smith, I am the Executive Director for the Office of Elementary Education and Reading, and I have with me today Mrs. Melissa Beck, who serves as the K3 Assessment Coordinator. Today, we will share with you an update on our kindergarten readiness assessment, as well as our next steps. The K Readiness Assessment will address the State Board's vision and mission of ensuring we are providing a foundation for our youngest learners, which will ensure that they gain the knowledge and skills necessary to be successful. Our presentation will address both one, two, and three. When reviewing reports, the background and statutory requirements are always useful in providing context. The Literacy-Based Promotion Act was passed in the 2013 legislative session and placed an emphasis on grade-level reading skills, particularly as students progress through grades kindergarten through third. The K Readiness Assessment provides parents, teachers, and early childhood providers with a common understanding of what children should know and be able to do when they enter kindergarten or, or school. The K Readiness is also used to measure how well pre-K programs prepare four-year-old children to transition to kindergarten. Mrs. Beck will review the data from our Spring 2022 Administration of the K Readiness Assessment.
The first results that we're going to look at are 18 state-funded early learning collaboratives. As a reminder, to ensure providers are preparing students for kindergarten, the Early Learning Collaborative Act of 2013 required the MDE to adopt a minimum rate of readiness that each pre-K provider participating in a collaborative must meet to remain eligible for funding. The Mississippi Committee members determined that a scale score of a 498 should be the literacy readiness score recommended for students at the end of pre-K. A score of 498 indicates that students have mastered 70% of early literacy school beginning of the year benchmark for pre-K. As you can see, our fall-to-spring scale score growth has remained very similar since 2016. In the 2122 school year, students averaged 142 points of grade. Before we look at these results, there's one note on the interpretation of the results. As you all know, COVID-19 pandemic disrupted many facets of education, including instruction, assessment, and student attendance. From March through June of 2020, childcare programs faced closures and uncertainties that posed a threat to their financial stability. Closure estimates vary, but the supply of licensed childcare shrank considerably, with closures reaching up to 55% among centers in Mississippi. Because of the pandemic, children in pre-K last school year were likely to enter school without any formal classroom experiences during their two- and three-year-old years. They had less exposure to other children, teachers, and adults due to isolation during these two years prior to entering that pre-K setting. Many of the adults they encountered wore masks, which hindered the ability to hear language clearly and see the mouth, which we know is a barrier for reading instruction. Less exposure to others speaking and listening causes delays in language development. In the spring of 2022, 2,755 students tested, with 65.12% of students meeting that end-of-year benchmark of a 498. The next results we'll review are the other funded pre-K programs. These programs can include Title I funded programs, self-contained or developmentally delayed special education programs, or blended Head Start or pre-K classrooms. In the 2122 school year, students grew by an average of 136 points, which is also similar to past years' growth. These classrooms also have an end-of-pre-K goal of a 498. In the spring of 22, 6,112 students tested, with 61.53% of those students meeting that end-of-year benchmark of a 498. The last set of results we will review are the results for kindergarten students. A spring scale score of a 681 places students on a trajectory to meet end-of-grade-three reading expectations. In the 2122 school year, students grew an average of 199 points. The 686 scale score, while lower, is still in the range of a transitional reader, just like the 7-11 scale score was in the spring of 2019. There is a note that I do want to make, almost 50% of our schools in the state had a growth of 200 points or more on that assessment. The last set of results we'll review are students meeting that end-of-year expectation for kindergarten. In the spring of 22, 33,841 students tested, with 57.67% of those students meeting that end-of-year benchmark of a 698. All three sets of results show a decrease from previous years, but the growth was similar to past years, we just started lower, that's why we're ending a little bit lower. But this does show that teachers and other school staff are continuing to work diligently to provide quality classroom instruction and close gaps for our youngest learners. Tanette's going to now talk about what some, our next steps are going to be.
So, we've talked about the why, so now we're going to address what we, MDE is going to encourage and suggest that schools do. We are suggesting that districts and schools train all of their teachers in the science of reading, and ensure that they are implementing it in all pre-K through third grade classrooms, using our K3 Professional Development Series, our new series, aimed pathways, which are pathways to proficient reading. We are encouraging and suggesting that schools and district leaders identify exemplary instructional practices and model classrooms based on outcomes, and replicate those strategies utilized in those classrooms throughout the district. Districts and schools should also host parent workshops that explain the K Readiness data, what the poss, and what the possible implications are as their children progress. They should use the Strong Readers, Strong Leaders website, which is, which includes interactive strategies that address five components of reading, as well as the pre-K and kindergarten family guides for student success. Another important step is for districts and schools to leverage additional state funding available to expand their pre-K classrooms. Schools and districts should use the data to inform their own internal PD or professional development, and identify strategies to help accelerate student learning in those kindergarten and pre-K and first grade classrooms. They should look at their tier-one and tier-two interventions as our youngest students enter at a lower level than ever before, thus impacting the acquisition of skills that are needed when they enter kindergarten and first grade. It's also important to develop strong partnerships with Head Starts and childcare providers in the areas they're supporting, to support pre-K students as they transition into kindergarten. On these slides, we'll see how we, at MDE, are using this data to make decisions. First, it's important to recognize that the results of this assessment shows more than delays in literacy skills. Children are missing foundational skills that support early learn, learning or literacy and other skills. One of these foundational skills is executive functioning, which includes working memory, mental flexibility, and self-control. This is a direct result of not participating in a classroom setting and having limited interactions with teachers and other students during their earlier foundational years. Early childhood coaches will provide support to pre-K and kindergarten teachers, as well as administrators, in those high need schools, and address those developmentally appropriate practices in the classrooms by supporting the students' acquisition of foundational skills. Early childhood coaches, literacy and intervention coaches will monitor the consistency of instruction in collaboratives, as well as in schools, through our job-invented coaching, which include modeling lessons, professional learning communities, and side-by-side coaching supports. This year, we will also expand and deploy intervention coaches to offer support to kindergarten and first grade teachers. MDE will provide training that encompasses literacy and developmentally appropriate practices through our new, newly acquired aimed pathways. This particular set of professional development includes 14 A-secrecyness learning sections, which include hundreds of learning tools, articles, teacher classroom videos, animations, and videos of experts in the field. This PD system also includes practices with specially designed interactive activities, downloadable resources to help them translate their new knowledge into instructional practice, as well as demonstrating an understanding of content by applying that understanding, that new knowledge, to real-life classroom scenarios via multiple-step student case studies. The Office of Early Childhood will also continue to support pre-K teachers and administrators with class implementation, and they will continue to use Brigant Screen 3, which is a comprehensive early learning observational screen to measure children's growth in all developmental domains. We will continue to share parent resources that explain the tier process and purpose of our universal screens, which is very important. This data is further proof of the pandemic's impact on the students in the state, and the importance of early learning experiences for our young children. As we follow this cohort of students, we will have to be intentional as we provide support and acceleration of their learning, so that they are on grade level by the time they reach the third grade. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. Any questions or comments from the board?
I would like to say that the Family Guide to Success is powerful, just keep those on the website, use them every day.
Good. Okay, thank you for the update, and while it does show a somewhat of a decline, it's still positive, and we're, we're grateful for that. That shows teachers and leaders are working out there. Our next item is an action item, this is approval of the fiscal year 2024 budget request, which you've all been involved in, Dr. Gavin.
Yes, good morning. Board, you have a copy of the budget presentation in your package, and it's not different than what we discussed last month in our work session. The only difference is, we do have the final calculation, the final preliminary calculation of MAP, and on page three of your documents, you see your proposed 2023 legislative priorities, those have not changed, and also on page four, you see your fiscal priorities, and again, those are the same as we discussed in our work session in June. And on page five of your presentation, I'll point out to you that our MAP request is for full funding, and that's $2.966 billion. And if you flip to page six, our total request for our FY24 budget request will be $3,318,587, of which, as you can see, 2.966 is for MAP. And then the remainder pages are just the details behind our FY24 budget request.
Any questions on this? The only change is the updated MAP calculation.
Yes. And I will point out, under the consent agenda, you do have the calculation of the student-based cost, and that is up considerably, but that's based on the, the inflation rate is up, as well as the, the teacher pay raise is also incorporated into that increased student-based cost.
Okay, any questions on this?
We have approval.
Go ahead.
We have approval of the 2024 budget.
Mr. East, do we have a second?
Second.
All right. All in favor of approving the fiscal year budget 2024?
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? All right, the motion carries unanimously, thank you. The next item, item three, is MDE contracts.
Okay, good morning. Again, for item three, we're bringing forth to the board one contract for approval, and it is an emergency contract with Data Recognition Corporation for this upcoming fiscal year. This particular contract sorted out, we did go the traditional route and did a competitive process to try and procure this contract, but once it made it to OPSER, there was a technicality issue with the contract, so they did not bring it forth to their board, so we're bringing this to you all to approve as an emergency contract, because these services will be needed before the school year starts, so we do not have time to go back out for another competitive process.
Okay, any questions on this? All right, then we'll entertain a motion under the Office of the Chief of, oh, who is it? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Miller, I didn't see you. Go ahead.
Not a problem. Dr. Gavin, what was the technicality that hung them up?
So, we had in our solicitation, it's an optional require, it's an optional add-on to the, to the procurement process, which includes having a pre-conference review, and you're supposed to have that conference review 14 days after the date of the initial solicitation. Our pre-conference was 12, I think 11 or 12 days, so we were two days ahead of when we should have had the pre-conference. Even though it's an optional requirement, the fact that we had it, and we had it two days early, they said there was a technicality that they could not bring it forth.
That's it?
Pretty much.
Two days? Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
There were no other, no issues? There were no other, no issues with the contract itself, other than that?
No, there was just, no, that was a major thing. They pointed out a few other things, but nothing, to my knowledge, hung it up, other than that.
All right. If there are no other questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve this contract with Data Recognition Corporation. We have Ms. Barrett. Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Any opposed? All right, thank you. The motion carries. The next item, four, is also MDE grant awards.
Yes, we're bringing...
Special education.
I'm sorry. Okay. Yes, we're bringing forth one grant for your approval, and it is to award a grant for Special Education State Systemic Improvement Plan for the literacy coaches. And you see behind there the various districts that we're serving and the amounts for each district.
Any questions on this? I think you're all very familiar with literacy coaches. All right, then I'll entertain a motion that we award this grant, these grants. Okay. All right, Ms. Werner, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Dr. McGeehee. No other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Item five is approval of a temporary rule to begin the APA process. This is to revise Mississippi Code 7397.1, and this is the State Board Policy Chapter 97 Rule 97.1. In case you figured that all out. Has to do with weapons.
Good morning, board members. Today, Mr. McGaryty and I are here bringing forward a request for approval of a temporary rule and to begin the Administrative Procedures Act process to revise State Board Policy Chapter 97.1. As you are aware, for the past six or so months, the MDE has brought forward to you four recommendations for either repealing outdated State Board policies or revising them. We've got ninety-nine chapters to go through, so this is not an easy or a quick lift. It requires cross-coordination of program offices, review of current federal and state law. While doing this, and with the tragedy in Uvalde and the uptick in conversations about school safety, it came to our attention that we have one of our policies that is outdated for some history. In 1990, the State Board of Education promulgated this policy, so this predates any notable school shootings or the adoption of our enhanced carry statutes. Our policy required that local school districts have a policy as it pertains to weapons on campus, but it also prohibited weapons on campus. This rule currently conflicts with Mississippi's enhanced carry statutes. So the enhanced carry statutes authorizes individuals who have the proper certification to carry weapons on certain, in certain areas that are enumerated in statutes. That includes elementary and secondary school facilities. So our policy is currently in conflict with that. I do, I want to note, State Board policies can't prohibit something that is authorized in law, even though we do have this policy on the books. The statute would supersede our policy, so know that. Today, we are requesting a revision to this policy, just to bring it into compliance with state law. It'll still require local school districts to adopt a policy as it pertains to weapons on campus, but it provides the local school districts with the authority and the discretion to determine that policy and what permissions and what restrictions.
Good morning. I just want to thank Ms. Meyer for her research and for her assistance with reading through these numerous policies and laws that can sometimes be difficult to interpret. As stated, in your consideration of this request this morning, I wanted to provide you an update regarding the newly formed School Safety Alliance. This past Monday, July 18th, the School Safety Alliance met in Ridgeland, Mississippi, and conducted their first meeting of this recently formed group. Co-chaired by Jim Brinson with the executive, with the deputy director with the Office of Homeland Security, along with myself, representing the Office of Safe and Early Schools and the Mississippi Department of Education, the School Safety Alliance is bringing several leaders of respective stakeholders together in efforts to enhance and strengthen the school safety in our state. Representatives from law enforcement, mental health, parental groups, youth court judges and prosecutors, educators, the Mississippi Association of School Administrators, and the Mississippi Association of School Superintendents are just a few members of this panel. Our intent is to hold discussions monthly as the group focuses on legislative and policy requirements related to school safety, while also considering the needs of school safety in a post-COVID world, combined with a spike in school shootings throughout the country. We'll be having discussions on matters such as State Board Policy 97.1 that you've just heard Ms. Meyer speak about, searching for best practices, training, and future development of policies to enhance and strengthen school safety in Mississippi. The temporary rule and final action you've just heard about are necessary to implement the policy revisions immediately upon its filing with the Secretary of State. Now, keep in mind, this will still go out for APA, and our intent is to bring this back in September with not only any APA comments we may receive, but also guidance from our School Safety Alliance.
Okay, any...
I said, would this mean that, like, teachers are allowed to have weapons on campus? Is that like, is that...
So this revision to this policy puts it in the hands of the local district to draft a policy. So the superintendent and the school board would set a policy on what restrictions and permissions are allowed as it relates to weapons on campus.
Okay. And do you guys have, like, a certification, like, what that would mean? What would they have to do to be considered as certified?
So there's enhanced carry... So there's enhanced carry statute, and it requires...
And I know they filed with the Secretary of State. Does the department have a filing on that? Do they send anything to the, to the department to know what their policy is? Do you...
Oh, not for...
Okay.
Some of the stakeholders at the table are to include the Department of Public Safety, and that was one of the very miniature discussions. I don't want to get ahead of things, but that was one of the preliminary discussions that came about as a result of our first meeting, was developing a course in which if districts choose to identify these individuals that can enhance concealed carry in their district as teachers or administrators, that they are actually held accountable to go through a course in addition to what you have to take to get the enhanced concealed carry, so that there's continued training for that. So those are conversations that we hope to be able to bring back in September with some enhancement. As far as the filing with MDE, that's not currently required, but that is something that we would be definitely bringing into the discussion when we talk about the training and the certification.
I want to make what I just heard, a normal enhanced carry, there will be additional training required through the APA process or through the law? Where's that piece going to come out?
That's just discussion that has floated already to the surface in the School Safety Alliance, so...
So as a school district, we're recommending that they wait through the APA process to come out? Or are we trying to tell them to do something before we get that background knowledge?
So our current statute, our current policy is in conflict with law. So we're asking for permission to request an immediate temporary rule that removes that conflict, but that still requires you to have a policy as it relates to weapons on campus. And there are agey opinions out there about what's permissible and what's not. There's a 2013 opinion out of, I believe, Monroe County School District, superintendent who asked it, and then DeSoto County School District opinion. That was in 2017. I would suggest local school districts consult with their board and their board attorney about what policies, but as it goes out for APA, the comment period is twenty-five days. The School Safety Alliance next meets after those twenty-five days, and the board meets before the School Safety Alliance meets. So we don't have the intention of bringing it back at the August board, but waiting till the September board to have the full comment period, as well as additional feedback from the School Safety Alliance if there are any additional substantive changes to the policy or other recommendations moving forward.
Okay, and I'm just... This does not put out there that the normal card that was mentioned earlier is acceptable. It goes to the school boards.
Yes, sir.
And so those school boards then have the same length of time that we're probably talking here before it comes back to us to make those kind of decisions.
Yes, sir. And doesn't that reflect contractual with the district? So they have the, the school board has the authority to determine whether or not, even if they have an enhanced carry, if they can set forth policies that allow that individual to bring that weapon on campus as a teacher or classified staff? Is that what you're asking?
What I'm asking more is about the timeframe for discussion that we're giving local school boards.
Yeah, the timeframe I'd be concerned about.
I'm agreement with what we're doing, so I might, it's a yay vote there for me, but I just want to make sure that it's, we have to explain this.
Yes, sir.
Do, school boards are going to need the same timeframe, I think, that we're going to need as a state board.
Yes, sir.
So can we give that legally, or we just got to do what we're doing here today?
So the, we're requesting the temporary rule again to remove the conflict that exists in state law. That state statute's going to supersede our policy regardless. The local school districts need to review their current policies and make sure that they're in compliance with both federal and state law, as well as Process Standard 31, which is about the safe and secure environment and the school safety manual.
And you just helped me out with the answer, because you included the federal guidance in there as well. So thank you very much for that.
All right, any other questions or comments? All right, do we have a motion to approve the... Okay, Ms. Werner, the process to begin the APA, well, to begin the APA process. Ms. Werner's made the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Dr. McGeehee, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all right, okay. Motion carries. Any other questions on this? Thought I heard something. Okay, the next item is the consent agenda. With the consent agenda, we're going to vote, excuse me, thank you all. We're going, pardon me, we're going to vote on items A through S as one item, and then we will vote separately on item T. So A through S, do we have a motion to get that on the floor? Okay, second, all right. We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on consent agenda items A through S? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Then item T, you can all read. That's about licensure guidelines for K-12. Do we have a motion to approve that item?
Madam Chairman, I need to let you know that this does involve Gupor School District, I believe, in this wording, and so I have to recuse myself from discussion and vote.
We'll let the record know that state that you did not participate nor vote. So on item T, do we have a motion to approve item T? Hello, do we have a motion to approve item T? Okay. Dr. Barrett, and do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Dr. McGeehee, any questions on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. The motion carries. Thank you. Today, we have no need for an executive session, so that's unusual. We typically have one. Let's see, are you, let me get back, skipping my... Do we have any, have any of you attended any other, any meetings that you'd like to report on? Anything, go ahead.
Dr. Benton for taking time with us at the Mass Conference, and it was such an honor for an incoming senior to job shadow the state superintendent, and she was just, you know, thrilled, and she got to meet with colleges. Also, their presentation by Dr. Benton, Dr. Vanderford, and John Kramer was awesome. They were standing room only in both of the sessions that we were at, and they did a phenomenal job and gave a lot of interesting information for all the things that we've been doing here at the department. And I just want to thank you again.
Good, good. That, you know, it's, just to piggyback on that and all the things that Mike has said and the four students we had today, they're just such wonderful opportunities for young people to expand their knowledge and to expand their areas of interest. And we appreciate you taking your student. It's an outside effort to do those kinds of things, and so we appreciate that. So we don't have anybody who's attended. I know Dr. McGeehee was at Mass. I saw him, I didn't get to talk to him, but I saw him across the room and some of the others. Mr. Miller, you got something? Yeah.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. On July 7th, I had the wonderful opportunity to, I guess, be the moderator of a forum for our Local Leadership Pine Belt Class on Education at William Carey. Our panelists included the Early Childhood Development Director at Hattiesburg Public School District, the principal from the Alternative School, as well as the Superintendent of Education in Lamar County, and Dr. Burnett, who is the dean of education at William Carey and soon to be its new president. They provided some excellent information to the members of the class about how education at all levels, including in the pine belt, including K through 12 particularly. I was impressed with Ms. Hope Michael is the director of the Early Learning Collaborative for Hattiesburg, and she provided some great insight on how, not only they're progressing, but how they're working with other early learning collaboratives, specifically in Lamar County and in Petal, to coordinate efforts to make sure they're reaching as many students as possible.
Well, good. Thank you for that update. Anything else? All right, good. And let's see, our next item is, well, let me, I assume, anybody need approval to attend? Any out-of-state meetings? Anybody going anywhere? Okay, then the next item is election of the chair and the vice chair. I have been serving as the chair in the unexpired term of Dr. Dean, when he left the board, and then Mr. East has been the vice chair. So we will entertain nominations for the chair and the vice chair at this point. Dr. Barry? Oh, okay.
Second.
Okay, is it second to Mr. East?
Let me think about that one. I second that one.
Okay, we have a second on that. Okay, we will, we will proceed with the tri, well, let's vote on this first. We have a motion and a second for Mr. East to be the vice chair and for myself to be the chair. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we, what has traditionally happened, but certainly is up to change anytime the board so desires. The vice chair has typically rolled into being the chair with obviously board approval once the chair leaves. Now, as I've said before, I, we are going to get through this superintendent selection and get them settled in and then we'll go from there. So we appreciate it and we'll plow right along and continue the business of the board. The August board meeting will be held on August the eighteenth and be held in this boardroom, start beginning at ten o'clock. Anybody else have any other business? Mr. Jacobs, we hope you feel okay and do well with, do okay with your COVID.
Thank you. I am doing better, but staying away.
Being a little stir crazy from having to be in the house all the time.
It just started yesterday, so.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn then. Okay, we got a second? All in favor? All right, we stand adjourned.